Okay. Thank you. If council would come up here, even at first, because I would like to introduce all of council this evening. Good evening. I want to welcome you all to this meeting about ADUs. And I know some of you have been here from the very beginning, maybe over three years ago, and some of you are brand new. So I just want to thank you all for coming out. I hope that you will get the answers to your questions. First of all, I would like to introduce the council members. Actually, I'm Rita Russell, Mayor Pro Tem. This is Councilmember Linda Olson. As a matter of fact, why don't you introduce yourself?
You're doing just fine. Linda Olson, District Two.
I'm Amy Martinez, at large. Welcome, everybody.
Cheryl Wink, at large.
Councilmember Questa and Councilmember Berentin, are you here? I saw them a minute ago. They're not here right now. When they come back in, we'll introduce them later. We're going to start this meeting by showing a video that takes about 15 minutes. Some of you may not have seen it. It kind of gives the history and the discussion that's gone on in the past. And then, I believe that, are we going to talk about the maps next? Okay?
It'll be, actually, it's in the presentation.
Oh, it's in the presentation. Okay. And then, we will open this up for discussion and for questions and comments that you all have. This evening is really designed for us to hear from you and where you would like to see ADUs go. Actually, I would like, do you want to introduce yourself?
You bet. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dave Questa, and I'm with District Four.
Lorette Berentin, I'm District Three.
Okay. And staff is here to help us out this evening, answering questions. Mr. Bobarol is here from...
Community Development.
All right. Thank you. And we have other staff members here also. And this wouldn't be possible without the staff. So thank you very much. I think it's a PowerPoint. I think it's a, well, it's...
Would it be helpful to have the lights off? Or...
Do I look good with purple hair?
That doesn't help you getting it set up.
ADUs can take a variety of attached and detached forms. However, the Inglewood Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending two types of detached ADUs only. The first type, known as the garden cottage, is a detached ground floor secondary structure located in the rear 35 percent of the single-family lot. This type of ADU is consistent with how Inglewood's...
Is everybody able to hear?
...built in the past.
Okay. You might want to start it again and see if you can do it in a way that everybody can hear it.
...is a detached unit above a garage. This type of ADU is more prevalent in central Denver. The advantage of the carriage house is the more efficient use of space that allows for a larger open area in the rear yard.
Could you just go ahead and restart it? And then, it looks like everybody would be able to hear it now.
Accessory dwelling units were historically built in Inglewood during the 1920s... Welcome to Back to the Future: Accessory Dwelling Units, City Council Town Hall Meeting, May 24, 2018. What are accessory dwelling units? Accessory dwelling units, known as ADUs, are small secondary residential units associated with a primary owner-occupied, single-family home. ADUs can take a variety of attached and detached forms. However, the Inglewood Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending two types of detached ADUs only. The first type, known as the garden cottage, is a detached ground floor secondary structure located in the rear 35 percent of the single-family lot. This type of ADU is consistent with how Inglewood's ADUs were built in the past. The second type, known as the carriage house, is a detached unit above a garage. This type of ADU is more prevalent in central Denver. The advantage of the carriage house is the more efficient use of space that allows for a larger open area in the rear yard. Accessory dwelling units were historically built in Inglewood during the 1920s, '30s, and '40s in response to housing shortages. There are over 180 existing ADUs scattered throughout the older portions of the city of Inglewood. Accessory dwelling units began falling out of favor in the United States in the 1950s as these post-war suburbs developed to meet housing needs. Inglewood-like communities all across the country began removing ADUs from the zoning code at this time. Accessory dwelling units have slowly made a comeback since the 1990s, particularly in the northwestern United States, in response to tight and expensive housing markets. In recent years, Denver, as well as a number of Denver suburbs, has reinstated ADUs as allowed uses in certain zones, districts. A planned unit development, known as the Logan Street Residences in Inglewood, located at the corner of Logan and Floyd Avenue, features a number of carriage house ADUs above garage units. Why is the city looking to restore accessory dwelling units as allowed uses? The Denver metropolitan region is once again suffering from severe housing shortages. Since 2010, the Denver metropolitan region has added 160,000, 460 new residents, but only added 26,586 new housing units during that time period. Few housing units were constructed during the early years of recovery from the Great Recession. The relatively more resilient Denver economy drew large numbers of millennial generation, the largest in the history of the United States, to Denver. Apartment vacancy rates have decreased from 2009 from 9 percent to today's 4 percent. Average rent has increased from 2009 at 860 to average rent of 2000, in 2017, of $1,420. Likewise, median housing prices have risen from 2009 at $200,000 to today's price at $420,000. ADUs have the potential to add new housing units spread throughout existing neighborhoods, and ADUs have the potential to offer senior homeowners supplemental income. Who will rent ADUs in Inglewood? Rent for ADUs will fall somewhere between a one-bedroom apartment at $1,000 and a single-family house around $2,000. ADUs will be most attractive to singles or couples who are willing to pay extra for a detached unit not part of an apartment complex. This group typically includes policemen and women, firemen and women, teachers, nurses, and young professionals. Often, ADU owners will house family members, including elderly relatives or young adults. The Inglewood Planning and Zoning Commission has identified five purposes for bringing back accessory dwelling units to Inglewood. Number one, provide options for varied and flexible lifestyle arrangements. Two, provide options for alternative building structures, living space. Three, provide potential supplemental sources of income for Inglewood homeowners. Four, increase property values and encourage higher levels of property maintenance. And finally, number five, provide options for building structure, living space expansion, while simultaneously encouraging preservation of existing structures. An accessory dwelling unit is a smaller secondary residential dwelling unit on the same lot as a principal one-unit dwelling. ADUs are independently habitable and provide the basic requirements of living, sleeping, cooking, and sanitation. There are two proposed types of ADUs. Garden cottages are detached residential structures on the same lot as a detached one-unit dwelling. Carriage houses are dwelling units above or attached to a detached garage. Attached ADUs, basements or additions, are not recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Accessory dwelling unit eligibility. A detached, single-family standard lot, 50-foot minimum width, would be eligible for one garden cottage or one carriage house unit. A detached, single-family small lot, 37-foot minimum width, would be eligible for one carriage house unit only. Urban lots, less than 37-foot width, townhomes, duplex, and multi-unit lots are not eligible for ADUs. An ADU could be created through new construction or the conversion of a qualifying alleyhouse to a garden cottage while simultaneously constructing a new principal dwelling in front of the garden cottage unit. Accessory dwelling unit owner occupancy requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission has established the following requirements for owner occupancy for ADUs. Owner must occupy the primary structure or ADU. Owner must file a deed restriction with the county that precludes the owner from renting both the primary structure and the ADU as separate units. The owner must verify annually that he/she continues to occupy one of the two units as their legal permanent address through the city's annual ADU mailing. The owner must reside on the property for a minimum of nine months a year. Owners may take a leave of absence and may apply to the city for this absence due to the following situations. Temporary job assignments, military deployments, educational and research sabbaticals, formal voluntary service for a humanitarian organization, religious missionary service, long-term hospital, nursing home, and assisted living facility stays due to adverse medical conditions. The owner must reside on the subject property for at least one year after construction of the accessory dwelling unit before applying to the city for a leave of absence. The owner may apply for a city-approved leave of absence of up to one year. During the approved leave of absence, the owner may rent both the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit at the same time. Accessory dwelling unit design criteria. Maximum size is 650 square feet. Exterior stairs for access to an upper-level accessory suite shall not be located on the side of the accessory structure parallel to the nearest side lot line. The lot coverage for a garden cottage ADU shall be counted toward the maximum allowed lot coverage. ADU placement is restricted to the rear 35 percent of the lot. ADU must conform with all existing accessory structure setbacks. A maximum bulk plane height of 12 feet will be established at side property lines. One off-street parking space shall be provided for each ADU. ADU must connect to the principal dwelling unit, water and sewer lines; separate lines are not allowed. ADUs may not be subdivided or sold separately. The Inglewood Planning and Zoning Commission is proposing the following maximum height and bulk plane requirements for ADUs, based in part by current regulations for primary residential structures and garages within the city of Inglewood. Currently, the maximum height for a primary residential structure is 32 feet, with a maximum bulk plane height of 17 feet measured at the side lot line. The commission is proposing an ADU maximum height of 26 feet and an ADU bulk plane maximum height of 12 feet measured at the side lot line. Proposed zoning districts for ADUs. A map of Inglewood's historic ADUs reveals certain patterns. Historic ADUs are typically clustered within a quarter-mile of the Broadway corridor and within a mile walking distance of downtown Inglewood, and are often found within the city's comprehensive plan, limited transition areas. Historic ADUs were typically located in areas with alleyways. Relatively few historic ADUs are found in the R1A and R1B zone districts, which date from the 1950s and 1960s. Historic ADUs are relatively absent from the commercial zone districts, business and medical. Based on these patterns, the Inglewood Planning and Zoning Commission recommends allowing new ADUs in the following zone districts. MUR3B, MUR3A, R2B, R2A, and R1C. The P&amp;Z Recommended ADU Zone District Map shows the zone districts where new ADUs would be allowed to be constructed. The R2 and MUR3 multifamily zone districts are colored brown. The R1C comprehensive plan transition areas are colored orange. The remainder of the R1C zone districts are colored light yellow. The map has been overlaid with the locations of existing accessory dwelling units. In making their final recommendations, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered the distribution of existing ADUs throughout the city. The Planning and Zoning Commission also considered the locational distribution of an early list of Inglewood residents who indicated interest in constructing ADUs. The majority of these residents live within the R1C zone districts. Here, we have a map of Inglewood residents who indicated at the June 13th and November 14th ADU open house workshops their interest in constructing accessory dwelling units. City staff developed two additional options for city council consideration. Option two would allow new ADU construction to occur in the R2 and MUR3 multifamily zones colored brown and in the R1C comprehensive plan transition areas colored in orange. New ADUs would not be allowed in the remaining R1C zone district at this time. Option three would allow new ADU construction to occur in the R2 and the MUR3 zone districts only. New ADUs would not be allowed in any portion of the R1C zone districts at this time. A fourth option was proposed by a former city council member who did not want to exclude residents of the R1A and R1B zone districts from constructing ADUs. All residential zones would be open for ADU construction. At the May 21 city council study session, a fifth option was proposed, in which council would decide not to allow new ADUs to be constructed anywhere in the city. City council would like to hear directly from Inglewood citizens concerning their preferences regarding the five ADU zone district options, or any concerns about any aspect of the proposed ADU regulations. Attendees may register to speak at the sign-in desk located near the community room entryway. Council will call each speaker to the podium in order. Each speaker will be allotted a maximum of three minutes. Speakers may voice their support or opposition to any aspect of the proposed ADU regulations, or may ask questions about any aspect of the proposed ADU regulations. Attendees who do not care to speak, but like to indicate support for or opposition to any of the five zone district options, may use sticky notes to write down their thoughts and post on any of the five zone district option maps. Mayor Russell will now begin the town hall meeting by calling the first registered speaker to the podium.
If you would like to sign up to speak, and you haven't signed up yet, please go ahead and do that. Is there a list back there, Nancy, that... Do you have a list of speakers? Thank you, Jay. And this is not a public hearing in any way, shape, or form. This is just very informal. And so, council is here to listen to you. And so, with that, we'll begin. Randall Friesen. And actually, when you come up, would you give your name, and whether you're a homeowner or a developer, or both? And then, just say what you'd like to share. Randall Friesen.
Good evening. My name's Randall Friesen. I live 4581 South Grant Street. I also own a property on 3900 block of South Grant Street. That's an alleyhouse. I bought it originally to scrape and build a house for myself as an architect, something I wanted to do. And I like the neighborhood that we selected, it's close to work for my wife, who works at Inglewood High School. So I'm here to encourage that we do this. I think it's good for the city in many ways, and I think it's good for society in many ways. The sprawl that we see going out in the suburbs really needs to be negated as much as we can, which means we need to be more dense as cities. Inglewood is well set up with good infrastructure, and this is a nice, slow-growth way to do things. It's not going to be fast. People aren't going to do it a lot. And in some ways, it actually may detract from some people wanting to do just complete scrape and rebuild and fill up the site as much as they can. So overall, I think the ADUs are a great idea. I think they help our city. I think they help society. In my personal case, we bought this to scrape. My daughter then got a job shortly after that as a paraprofessional schoolteacher, which doesn't pay much. She can't afford to live anywhere in the metro area on that kind of salary. So we rented it to her. We're subsidizing her rent, obviously. But it's a good model. So as we got to thinking about this, instead of scraping, we'd like to build in front of it, keep the carriage house, and we'd essentially have a little family compound to live in. And I think the staff has done a good job of pointing out that it's a good way for people to age in place as well. And so I think it's a good thing. I'd really like to see you guys do it, and I would be in favor of doing it throughout the city. I think that's option four. If not, certainly, option one. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much for your thoughts. Council want to ask any questions, or...
We're having trouble hearing in the background.
Okay, so it's probably that mic. Thank you, Mr. Friesen. Next is John Buchanan.
Good evening, Mr. Buchanan.
Good evening. My name's John Buchanan. I live at 3021 South Franklin Street. I'm an architect, and I'm also here with a client who is a resident in one of the potential zones that have been identified. And I just want to say that in reading the proposal, it's been really well thought through, I think, and I want to echo, I don't need to restate what Randall said. I agree with all of those points that he made. And I think this is a very good, solid, common sense approach, and I certainly am in favor of it. Of course, I want to help my client in regard to that as well. That's all I'm saying.
All right. Thank you very much.
I do have a question.
Yes.
I do have a question. So you are not looking to do it on your property that you live on in Inglewood, but someone else?
Correct. Currently, as it's stated, and I think it would be option four, which would really open it up to all of them, as it's currently stated, that isn't an option where I live. And I have mixed feelings about that. I think that in many ways, it would be a good thing for that neighborhood, but it's also on the register, National Register, as a neighborhood. So, you know, I know that it would be met with some fraught concerns in that regard. But I think, in general, it's a really good proposal.
Out of the four or five, obviously, the four, which one do you prefer?
I believe it's number one. Yeah.
Could I ask a question? So you live in Arapahoe Acres?
Yes.
Why don't you think that they would want to do this in Arapahoe Acres?
I think some of the lots are kind of small. There's also no alley access. Adding additional off-street parking for some of those would be a challenge. You know, so I think for those reasons. I happen to live in a unit, in a property that has the largest footprint as a property, and I believe there's room for it. But, you know, that would be an exception that most of my neighbors couldn't meet.
You do agree that there's some areas, then, or are you saying you think there's some areas that it's not a good idea, or...
Yeah, I mean, that's overly general, overly general question in a certain sense. But I suspect that there are likely some areas where the lot sizes are quite small. And, you know, rather than, as Randall said, building out to the full maximum for a footprint, you know, there may be some instances where that just wouldn't fit.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Buchanan. Next is Stephen Rizley, or, yes?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm a homeowner living at 4885 South Grant, and my wife and I have lived in Inglewood for about three years. And we're in the process of renovating that house for a retirement home. So I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I don't know if we would ever do an ADU, but as somebody on a fixed income, it presents the option of a safety net, and I find that extremely attractive. I'm also speaking on behalf of two close friends of mine, both of whom are out of town, single women in their 50s. And neither one can afford to retire in Inglewood without some supplemental income once they go to fixed income. And so, both Jerry and Cheryl authorized me to speak on their behalf. I know they're both Inglewood residents. And I think the, one of the... And I think the, one of the objectives is to allow homeowners to have supplemental income in their retirement. And that's just one piece of many reasons why they should be allowed. But I think from my perspective, and from my friend's perspective particularly, it's a very important piece. The metro area, as I've seen, as we've seen, has become more and more and more expensive, and Inglewood is not exempt from that. I'm not sure we would have been able to do what we're doing now if we were purchasing a house right now, doing the renovations. So option four would be the preferred route, but option one would be acceptable as well.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Rizley? Thank you very much. Next is Pamela Strusel. Hi.
Hi, everyone. I am currently living at 3420 South Downing, and I think from, if what I can figure out from the maps, that's a transitional area, I believe. I know, anybody have any answers to that?
Can staff answer that question?
Yes, it is a comprehensive plan residential transition area.
It is. So it would qualify?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Now, I also own a duplex next door, an up-down duplex, and I'm actually moving there because I am hopefully going to be able to retire someday soon. And I'll be in the same boat as so many other people have talked about. I'll be retired, a senior. I'd like to have a little additional income. Because it is a duplex, I could not tell from the slide whether it's a 50-foot lot. And so is that, I'm going to build a garage behind the duplex, and is, does that qualify for building an ADU?
Not according to the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have excluded dup, multifamily properties from having ADUs.
May I ask why?
I think they thought that that would be putting too much onto a small lot, that you already have a fairly large footprint from a duplex, and if you put a third unit, they just didn't want to go there.
Okay, because it's the same footprint as my house that I live in, which is right next door. So I'm, is there any way to protest or contest that?
Can share right now that you would like to have that changed if you?
I would, I would appreciate that. It is alley access. Like I said, I have owned that property for many years. And since I'm moving into it, I will be a resident in the duplex, and I would like to build the carriage house.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Strusel.
Let me make a comment. So maybe mayor, can you hear me? Maybe informationally or a process for us. One of the ways we could use the sticky notes would be for these kinds of additional ideas that you come up with. So if they were placed on the maps in the area, you know, that you have enough property that you'd want us to make, pay attention to, that might be useful, too. So not just pros or cons, but, you know, I would be favorable if this was like this, or I would be unfavorable, but just so we get a little bit more depth in the kind of feedback for this.
I think that's a great idea. So if you, there's some post-it notes over there before you, okay, just put those on the map. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Stite.
Stidle?
Stidle?
Hi. Karen Stidle, speaking for the Stidle household at 3290 South Huron Street. We're just a block and over the wall. I found myself in the unfortunate situation to have been widowed a couple of years ago. So I retired, and both of my children are here. My son is the homeowner, been there for about five years. I cannot afford on my retirement income to maintain a separate residence. We have alley access, a large corner lot, and we feel, and there's already a building there, so we're waiting to kind of get an idea of what the rules are going to be as to whether we refurbish that particular one, or do we move it over, whatever. But it's a, it's a nice size. And it would be a perfect mother-in-law house. And that's the goal, so I don't have to be in on a daily basis with my lovely grandchildren. And, but we're very much a Walton's family, and we would like to keep it that way. I think the support that I'm able to give them, and in turn, they give me the support. And I'm happy to keep the, what do we say? The economy going by shopping at the local places for my grandchildren. So we are totally in favor of that, and we hope that the rules will be reasonable, because we're just waiting for that, the rules to be kind of fleshed out before we can move, you know, give everything to the architect. So that's what we're waiting for.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Is there already a current ADU on there? You said there's already a current building on there?
There is. We, my son was fortunate enough to buy it maybe six years ago. It was a foreclosure property. And there, it looks like it's like a double Y, double D garage type of a building. It's got a pad and everything. Depending on what the rules are, whatever, it, you know, yet to be determined whether we can actually just kind of refurbish that, or do we need to just knock it down and start fresh, whatever. So it just?
He already had, he already has a property that has the grandfathered in ADU on the property.
I don't know that. It looks to me like it's like a garage, another garage.
Can I speak? I'm actually her son. She was here for me.
Oh! Here he is!
She didn't say me. It's just a garage.
Okay.
There is no ADU.
Because people who currently have ADUs on there, I just wondered if that was the case for the staff to speak to that and how any of this would affect any of the current ADUs. But that's not the case here, so thank you for clarification.
Point of information. Ms. Robro, do you mind speaking to that right now? What would happen if any of these four plans were to pass with the existing 180 ADUs that you alluded to? Were those grandfathered in?
The 180 existing ADUs would continue to operate exactly as they do today. They would not require the owner occupancy requirements. They would just continue as they are, as they have been for years.
So they would not be subject to any new rules that would be adopted?
Correct. These are, these rules that we are talking about this evening only apply to new construction of ADUs.
Thank you.
So they would also not benefit from anything that we're passing either. They would just continue on as they have been?
Yes.
Thank you.
So may I ask a question on my mom's behalf, on my behalf?
On your kid's behalf, too?
Right.
Yeah, come up to the mic.
My question is really a question of clarification. My, the detached garage has been there for a long time, as far as I know. And it has different rules from the ADU rules that are being proposed. But what isn't clear to me is the carriage house is a, like an ADU on top of a garage. But the 650 square feet, is that just for the part that is the livable space, or does that include the garage space? Could I put a 650 square foot ADU on top of my, you know, 500 square foot detached garage, or how does that work?
The 650 square feet refers to the living space only, and not the garage space below that's separate. I'm not sure how, well, you could, if you, could that be actually possible, to build 650 square feet above 500 square feet?
Well, but let me clarify. The actual, the actual restrictions on the garage are 1,000 square feet, at least from what I know about my property. And these are the papers that I've gotten from the, you know, the office here. So that would be possible. But for instance, the maximum height of the garage is 16 feet. See? So that's a little clarification that I would really actually like.
For a, for a carriage house ADU, the height will be 26 feet.
Right. On top of a 1,000 square foot garage?
No, that'd be the total height of the, its structure. You'd have a 10 feet for your garage, another 10 feet for the ADU, and a 6-foot sloping roof.
Okay, so they could be combined, though, is what I'm saying. If I have, not that I want 1,000 square foot garage in the back of my house, but that would be 650 square feet on top of a potential maximum of 1,000 square feet, as long as it's, you know, 26? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I know that's very specific, but I've been looking into those, you know, restrictions and everything before this was even proposed, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
And a point of information, just to ask. So 1,000 square foot garage is currently permissible?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so if somebody wants to go forward with building something, they would still need to come to the building department first, and with the plans and all of that. So we're just giving general information.
Yes. You must get a permit. You have to come to the building department, and you have to have an architectural plan.
Don't start building that garage yet.
All right. Thank you. Karen Dixon.
Hi, I'm Karen Dixon. I live and am the homeowner at 2705 South Grant. I believe that's District One. I am in support of option four. I'm a, come to you as not only a homeowner, but a Realtor and also a practicing architect, which is actually my primary duty. I represent a segment of the population that has gone from a two-income household to a one-income household. And that's not really covered, but similar to seniors, fixed income essentially, that doesn't really support, it's a struggle to support my living. So I support this in favor personally, in favor of having a rental unit on my property to help, you know, provide income supplement. Professionally speaking, pardon my notes, but professionally speaking, I'm a density proponent. I think it's smart growth. I think this is a low-impact solution versus a bunch of apartment buildings everywhere. I think it maintains the character of our community. And so I'm just in favor of option four.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
All right.
I think you have a question. So do you work with, in your professional life, with any other areas of the metro area that have ADUs?
I work in Denver, but the firm that I'm working at does primarily multifamily residential. So ADUs don't apply for that, but they can't build them fast enough to support the housing growth, housing demand that we have. So I think this will help to alleviate some of the pressure on other communities. I believe in open space. I believe in using, you know, the core and existing infrastructure to support growth versus sprawl, as the previous, one of the previous architects has mentioned. And I think this is a good way to do it.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Pam Beetz. Good evening, Ms. Beetz.
Good evening. I'm a homeowner for about 20 years here in Inglewood at 3224 South Delaware Street. And, you know, I can understand a lot of the comments tonight, and I'm also faced with many of the "I can't afford to live here" issues. And they're pretty strong issues. However, I moved to Inglewood for a couple of specific reasons. I wanted to have a backyard. I wanted to have a house where I didn't look into my neighbors' windows. I wanted to have some space. I wanted to have some wider streets. I didn't want to live in an area that was a rental unit. And I love the historic character of this neighborhood, and that's what I fear will be destroyed with this. I can, you know, I actually, you know, don't disagree with some of the comments, but I don't know that the cost of, we, I think we'll pay more of a cost in our neighborhoods and in the integrity of our neighbor, in our homes. I, you know, I just recently bought new, or purchased new homeowner's insurance, and the agent asked me, "Do you have the woodgrain plastic doors?" And I said, "No, they're mahogany." You know, you cannot replace that here, and I don't think you can replace our backyards. And that's what I fear, is that my, in my neighborhood block, that my neighborhood, my back, my neighbors' yards will be turned into apartment complexes. And even though you have restrictions on size, like in my neighborhood, if you can put up a 650 square foot garden home, my house is 900 square feet roughly. You know, that's my whole backyard. That could be my neighbor's backyard. I looked into replacing my 1946 toilet and found out it's going to be difficult to do because the grade's wrong in the sewer. You know, there's a lot of problems that we don't think about. And I believe, you know, and I understand the idea of it'd be great to have some, a rental property and the income, but the cost of, and I'm not an architect, but I can probably guess, that the cost of building something in order to get the actual financial benefit over that is going to take more than four or five years. You know, it'll probably take longer than I have to live here. And one of the things I also was thinking about with this is this always, these things come up in this neighborhood. It never comes up in the more affluent parts of Inglewood. You know, my name, my zip code is shared with Cherry Hills. I doubt they'd want an ADU in their backyard. But it's okay in our backyard. You know, with the pushback in Denver, I think Inglewood is feeling it. And I, I really want to see our neighborhoods stay single-family homes. I want to see them a place where people can have children, and their dog, and a garage in their backyard, and a garden, and they don't have to look at somebody else's rental property in the back. And I guess that's probably all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beetz. Does anybody have any questions?
What is the range of the cost of building an ADU? I mean, just an average range? Is anyone else?
You would be looking at probably starting at $100,000 and going up from there.
I think the Denver Post did a very good article on that, that you might want to research, that they looked at, I think one of the reporters went and took all of the Denver rules and regulations, and I think it was around $260,000.
Thank you.
So I think that's a good article to reference, and there's, there's a lot of that kind of...
My bedroom costs more than $100,000.
There's, there's a lot...
Just for a point of order, if we could have everyone speak at the mic so that everyone else can hear, I think that'd be useful for everyone.
I think there's a lot of information out there for that kind of thing to, to address what you had brought up as well.
Anything else?
But if you want to sign up, then you can go ahead and come to the podium. I think it'd make it a little easier. If you didn't have an opportunity to sign up, I think you can still sign up back there.
There's still more sign up in the back, so you can sign up in the back if you'd like to speak. Thank you very much, Ms. Beetz. Karen Pilgrim.
Good evening. I'm a homeowner. Been a homeowner in Inglewood for almost 40 years. And I like the city of Inglewood. I've always liked the city of Inglewood. And I feel like the last speaker. I feel like this, this kind of a thing will change our neighborhoods. I do not want to look out in my backyard and see another building in my neighbor's backyard. I like the openness of our backyards. I like the big trees in our backyards. So I, if this went forward, I would like to see very limited, very limited use of it. So not, definitely not for, not everywhere in the city. Because originally, when I came to the open house, I believed that you had to have an alley access for this, for most of it at least, if you're doing the garden houses, garden cottages. And some places in Inglewood don't have alleys. But I would go for option two or three if you wanted to do a very limited. But I would hope the city would maybe start out with a limited number, kind of check and see how it goes then, but rather than jump into it, you know, like, well, let's do 2,000 to start, but start with a limited number, kind of see how it goes and assess it. But that's how I feel. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you live in an area that would allow it under one, or?
I believe I am in a place without alleys, because I'm almost, I am almost to Logan and Bellevue, so, yeah, I don't think at this point, unless it goes citywide, it would not affect my neighborhood at this point. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I would just like to encourage everyone that perhaps has already spoken to put some of your thoughts down on sticky notes and put them on the maps also. Although, you know, we are catching some information, it'll just be helpful to have all the information in one place. The next person is Chuck Domde.
Hi, good evening. My name's Chuck Domde. My wife, Michelle, and I own the house.
Hi, good evening. My name's Chuck Domde. My wife, Michelle, I own the house at Elati and Cornell, and we're here in support of this plan. I did have a question. The presentation was very helpful, but it didn't go into depth as to what happens years down the road as far as owner occupancy and owner selling a property. There must be some sort of a restriction you're going to put on that that wouldn't allow you to sell the day after you do this. I'm curious about what that would be.
So it, let's say at some point you decide that you no longer want to have the ADU, you're really...
No, sell the property. You want to sell.
You want to sell your property. You would, you could either find a buyer who has the same intention of living on the property and renting it as an ADU, or you could sell it to somebody who may not want to rent it and may just want to use it for their personal...
Okay, but it had to be, it would be in your, your, your sale, the title sale, that the purchaser has to live somewhere on the property?
So...
That's kind of...
The ADU ordinance, if you get, if somebody gets a, a permit to construct an ADU, they will have to file a deed restriction with the county.
Okay.
And so when you, when you go to sell it, it will come up in the title search, so that they know that they cannot rent it unless they live there.
Well, that could certainly limit your buyers. Okay, thank you.
I would make the comment, sir, that it is by ordinance, so these are just proposed things, I mean, an ordinance that is done by a council today can be done or changed by a council in the future, so it is as permanent as council.
Councilmember Martinez.
Of the five options, which one or more are you a favorite?
I would think that, if you're a homeowner and your property meets the requirements, then everyone should have the same option.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to be on the other side of the street when you said no to me, yes to that person.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bonnie Doolittle.
Good evening. I am a new resident. We just purchased our home at the beginning of 2017. We live in District Four. I would like to say that I'm strongly in favor of this for the fourth option. It would be great if we could have one-income families with huge sprawling yards and picket fences and golden retrievers, and your parents can afford to retire. That would be great, but that is not where we live. It is so expensive in Denver, and I have baby boomer parents. Where are they going to go? I mean, the option is, is that you put them in a state-run facility if they haven't planned for retirement, or you move them into your house. It would be nice if they could have some sort of independence while still I'm there to watch them, to make sure that they're okay. So I'd like to say I'm strongly in favor of this. Thank you.
And do you have a particular option that you like?
Put them everywhere. Put them, just put them, put them in the street and put them, put them on top of houses. Just put them, put them out there. I will say that we do live in an R2, so, I mean, my backyard is like basically 7-Eleven, so I'm probably not the same as everybody else, but I say, put them everywhere. Big treehouses, that would be great. I do have a question regarding if you wanted to convert an existing garage. Most garages have a slab foundation, and currently you can't get an occupancy permit on a slab foundation. So would that be, what would the change be in that? Would that, would you have to tear out your garage to put in a foundation? Because that is expensive.
We had a conversation with the chief building official here in Inglewood about that, and according to her, the, it would be so expensive to renovate, to take a garage and try to bring it up to a standard for a living in it as an ADU, that she said you'd be better off just to knock it down and start from scratch. So we decided to not allow for garage conversions.
Okay, so it would need to be knocked down and rebuilt?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So what she's just asked, could I please ask a follow-up question? If you can put an ADU on top of a garage, then why, why the difference between the two?
That may have gotten confusing. In the same fashion with a carriage house, you would not be able to actually build on top of the garage. You would have to knock it down and start from scratch.
Right. So right now you could not just take an existing garage and build on top of it?
That is, that is what we are proposing.
Is that up for debate?
We already got your treehouse thing going.
I'm just saying that especially for what we're talking about, which I think is increasing the density of Inglewood in a smart way, I think everyone can agree that we don't want to tear down historic beautiful homes and build huge high-rises that never have enough parking. Nobody wants that. But if we can increase the population density in a smart way, that's a good idea. But again, everything's so expensive, and if you're going to tear down an existing garage and rebuild that foundation, that is $250,000. So I would just like to open that for discussion, that may be grandfathering in a slab foundation, as long as all of your other code was up to code. I think that would be an acceptable situation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are you on the list to speak?
No, I, I was looking to comment on that last question about slabs and garages.
Okay.
I think everybody's got a...
Has everybody signed up if you want to speak? So you're just going to make a quick comment on the slab?
Only because I did sign up and then I crossed my name off, but, so. I do not, my name is Brian Pearson. I don't live in the city of Inglewood. I'm an architect, seems like a lot of us are, and I do own a building company that does ADUs, and we are doing these currently in Denver. The idea about garage slabs and tearing down an existing garage, my question was, perhaps it's a newer garage that has a foundation that could support an ADU above it. There are plenty of newer garages up and down the alleys of Inglewood, and I've canvassed them. Would that be a site-by-site specific sort of review, or are you just saying it has to be a new garage? I have a follow-up to that.
We have not, we, we, you're correct that we, the, our discussions with the building official, we decided to not go there, but it is a kind of a good point, I think, that you're making, that, you know, that there are newer garages that probably could support it.
Okay, fair enough. Also, I don't think knocking down an older garage and building a new one is out of the budget of most people. A new garage, it's about $25,000 to $30,000. So it does not put you into that $250,000 range. In fact, we do many of our ADUs for about $200 a square foot, and that's on top of a 20-by-20 garage. So do the math. You know, there's profit that needs to be made for the builder, but, and I did read the Denver Post article. I don't agree with that. I, that, I'd like to know where the median is, not the average, because many people go above and beyond with appliances and furnishings and fixtures and all kinds of things. You can do a very nice accessory dwelling unit for about $150,000, which is $100,000 less than what we've been discussing tonight.
There might be a few people want to get you to guarantee that price.
I'm here, I have cards.
All right, thank you.
But you, we can't do them in Inglewood.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Our, our next speaker is Maureen White. And please, if you want to speak, if you would just go to the back and sign up and get your name on the list. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maureen White, and I live in the 3200 block of Grant Street, and the house I live in was 100 years old in 2015. So I'd like to thank everybody that came, because this is the best turnout I've seen at any meeting that citizens were invited to. So I appreciate every one of you coming, whether I agree with you or I don't agree with you. I think we're coming from two different positions. So tonight I see that there are older, long-term residents of Inglewood like I am. I was actually born and raised in Inglewood, came back in 1992, and then there are those of you who I will call newbies, even if you've been here six years or eight years. And I see the attitude and the interest could pretty much be split down the middle from what I'm seeing and what I know from past meetings. I know there's a lot of people that are not here tonight because they feel like this decision has kind of already been made, and I trust City Council that it has not been made, and they'll take into consideration what everyone here has to say. So in the past, one thing I've noticed also is there are people who, like we here tonight, have an architect already who could clearly tell us what the charge he's going to have for building whatever his customer wants. But also, I know that from past meetings, there were people that I'll call do-it-yourselfers, okay? So my fear is those people and some of you who clearly have a wonderful vision of what you can accomplish with an ADU, and I just buried a 99-year-old aunt, so I understand the concerns for people aging and the cost of trying to help them. Very clearly, I understand that. But next door to me is a house that the gentleman took out a permit to have a new roof put on at least nine years ago, and the city can't tell me exactly when that permit was taken out, but it never happened. There's a tarp over half the roof, and in addition to that, the city gave him a permit to tear off the back half of the house, which he did, and he's allowed to, he's put in a plan, and it's been approved to build a two-story addition on the back of the house. The demolition happened, but there's no progress beyond that. So I was told by the city, you can take out a permit and just pay to keep renewing it. So I'm worried about what can happen, because I don't think we have enough information yet to clearly move forward. I think people who have not been involved in building projects, and my husband was a professional engineer, we doubled the square footage of one house in Jeffco, we built another 2,700 square-foot house, so I know the steps. When I called the city today to ask them to explain to me if I wanted to build an ADU, what would those steps be? And they said, "That's not decided yet. That will have to be determined." And I said specifically, "Would it be like following the steps in place now for a home, just to build a home?" And they said, "Not necessarily." So I'm really concerned about what could happen. And for those of us who've been here a while, and one gentleman used the term historic, we consider our neighborhoods historic. And if there are strict guidelines as to what could be built would be one thing, and I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to one-story homes like the 180 that exist in Inglewood, because the majority of them are not only one-story, but the design matches the existing house. So those of you that have been down Logan Street and Floyd, the intersection there, yes, those were built by Stone Creek, and they're being used as examples of ADUs. Do they fit the neighborhood? No, absolutely not. And when the information was given to us as neighbors as to what could happen with those units above the garage, it was the owners would use them, only the owners would use them. And now we know there's a massage business operating out of one of those above a garage with customers doing. It is not the owner of the property that has the business, and another one is an Airbnb. And in addition to that, my other concern is the damages being done to the neighbor's property with all the construction going on in Inglewood. And Cheryl, you had a town hall meeting, and you got to hear it. And after that meeting, I went to the people who back up to those buildings on Logan Street. The apartment owner told me of all the problems he experienced with Stone Creek. He has photographs. He went to the city, he went to the builder. At first, the builder said, "Well, when we're all done, they'll be taken care of." Same thing happened with two women who have a small house that back up to the buildings that Stone Creek did there, and they were told, "It'll be fixed when we're done." Nothing happened. Nothing was fixed. And the city's response was, "Get a lawyer. You can take them to small claims court." That's the kind of support they got. So there's a lot to consider here, people, whether you're for the ADUs or you're against them. And I don't think it's been looked into enough, and my one suggestion would be, for those of you who really want to do ADUs, the city needs to do a workshop and walk you through the process. Hold your hands if you've never been involved in any building, so you really could get a picture of what would this look like, what would it cost, what's the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gerald Tindall. Good evening, Mr. Tindall.
Good evening. I'm a homeowner at 3221 South Grant. I've lived in Inglewood since 1980. The house is 103 years old, and as the previous speaker was saying, there's been a lot of problems with the structures that have been built there at Logan and Floyd. I would invite anyone who thinks that ADUs all over the place are a great idea to try to park on Capitol Hill at night. And part of the problem is that no matter whether we're talking Inglewood or somewhere in Denver, the idea that people will only have one car and that you only have to provide one off-street space, I know of very, very few people who only have one car, and I think that's even more prevalent here in Inglewood than it would be in Capitol Hill. So I think that parking is a huge problem, and I don't think that people realize how much of a mess it is when you want to park next to your own house at night. You come back from work and you end up driving around, driving around, driving around, trying to find someplace to park. So I think that's very unrealistic. And our alleys, I know from my own, get an awful lot of usage. A lot of people have their garages opening onto the alley, and they need to use those alleys, and when you have ADUs with probably extra cars parked up against them because they have two cars, it just makes the alleys absolutely impossible, and it would be much worse during the construction phase, because we've already seen that at that same project at Logan and Floyd. So that's my primary concern, is the parking, and my secondary concern is I do not feel that Inglewood with its current water and sewer system would be up to all these additional residents. I think it's going to create a lot of problems, you know, once these extra families are living in the ADUs. And I guess lastly, I'd like to say that I, like one of the previous speakers, moved to Inglewood because it had a lot of single-family homes with large yards and large trees, and I know that that is going to be sacrificed with these ADUs, and I hate to say it, but I think that the restrictions being put on them now will probably get variances in the future, and it will be even worse than the way it starts out. So I'm definitely against the idea you would, you can put me down for option five. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tindall. Any questions? All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Athani Elsierra. Yes, actually, would you stand up, please, anyway? I apologize. This is our... This is our newest council member-elect, and he is the council, Mr. One Council Member. It's nice to have you here this evening, Mr. Sierra. Our next speaker is Cynthia Sirfaz. Joseph Berry.
Hello, I'm Cynthia Sirfaz. I live at 3297 South Downing, and I have a picture of my house from 1908 with cattle in the front yard, no Downing Street. I do have a question for Mr. Vorbrill. In the materials for this meeting, a fourth criteria for who could own an ADU was that corporations could own ADUs with a requirement that a person had to live in the ADU who had 50% voting, or something like that, and then rent out the other portion? That wasn't in your overhead for this audience?
The Planning and Zoning Commission discussed a lot of different ownership types of setups, because we've seen them since the Great Recession. Sometimes the house goes into foreclosure. We've also seen people set up LLCs. They have various different ways of owning things now. And so, yes, they had, if there was such a setup like that, the person, somebody, the representative must live there who had at least 50% stake in the house.
So why didn't you include that in your overhead?
Probably for time purposes, and probably also it's very complicated.
Okay, so like many things that have happened during the process of this ADU process, it's misleading. And all of the information about the ADU process hasn't been brought forth. And every time I've come to an ADU meeting, and I've been to several of them, the, excuse me, the builders, the architects, and the realtors have many times outnumbered the Inglewood citizens 10 to 1, which is very discouraging. So, as you can tell, I am against ADUs. I've lived in Inglewood for 21 years. My house, again, is over 100-years-old. And anything that I go to do in my house costs a hell of a lot more than it costs everybody else, because my house is 100-years-old. And everybody before me used ancient underwear to do the repairs with, and I have to pull out the ancient underwear and bring everything up to code. So it's always an adventure. I have a big supply of ancient underwear, by the way. Yay! I also have a big supply of ancient linoleum. So, I have things. Yucky things. And horsehair, horsehair wiring, by the way, really exciting. It's still hanging from my ceiling, even though it doesn't go anywhere. One of the, one of the things that I do not like about ADUs is that it infills residential communities. And again, I moved to Inglewood 21-years ago because we enjoyed the residential communities, we liked the trees, we liked the big, open streets. And now, even in my part of Inglewood, on a weekend, even though there are residences with three-car garages, you can't park on the streets because people are bumper-to-bumper. So maybe my neighbors are super-social, and they have visitors every weekend, so you can't park on the streets. Or they're not using their garages, and you can't walk on the sidewalks either, because there are so many cars parked on the streets, even where I live. So when you bring in ADUs, the parking's going to be even worse. And down around the hospital on the weekends, on Pearl, South Pearl, 33 and 3200 South Pearl, Washington and Emerson, you, they are using lawn chairs and all their devices to block parking spaces, so people can park there even on the weekends. And when they are parking, they're parking out into the intersections on the corners because there's no parking. The other thing we have going on is the alleys are filthy. They are overgrown, there's construction trash, there's people-moving-out trash, there's electronics leaking lead and cadmium into the alleys. It's disgusting. So we, we are, we are having growth problems in Inglewood already in our residential communities that aren't being addressed. And the traffic is horrific in our, in our neighborhoods right now. And if you want to go racing, I suggest you use Floyd or Gerard any day you want to, because they're certainly going over 40 miles an hour. And they're running the red light at Floyd all the time, because we don't have any police, policing that intersection anymore. So I am not for infilling our residential areas, because they're losing the character, and we're losing our quality of life here in Inglewood.
Any questions for Ms. Sirfaz? Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Joseph Berry, and then Deanna Berry.
Hi, Mayor, council members, neighbors. I'm a newbie. I moved here eight years ago. And I moved my mom in probably about four years ago, five years ago, so she didn't have to deal with stairs anymore, and she could be three blocks away in case something happened. You know, I think the ADU is a brilliant concept, you know, putting big apartment buildings up, you're using infrastructure that's already in place, making sure permits are pulled, so it's used properly and effectively. I only have one car. She only has one car. Most of the single people I know have one car, and, you know, older people don't necessarily have a ton of cars, and they don't have a ton of space in an ADU. You know, they don't really need all that stuff. I did an email to the council members on January 9th. I did a bunch of research, because I'm a big proponent of ADUs. I sent it to everybody, but one really fun fact that everybody should know is that Denver County tracked all of their ADUs from 2010 to 2017 as of July. And the thousands and thousands of homes that allow ADUs, 139 were put in. So it's real, some perspective that just giving us the allowance to make that choice as a homeowner is key. How many people are going to take advantage of it? Not many. Thousands and thousands of homeowners have that option, did not take advantage of it. Another case study in the California's East Bay, and everybody knows California's crazy, found that actual 55% of ADUs were being used by primary family members, 26% by the actual owners themselves. So you talk about making your community better, you're going to get your friends and family in there for the most part. You know, a large majority of those are going to use that for that. I'm, I want my mom to be able to have my brother come and stay with them, and not me. But, you know, the other thing is, is that she's got the space, that she can use it how she wants. And in, you know, 20 years, if she needs long-term care, she's got 24 hours a day, and she can stay in her home. I'm also a proponent of the short term, just so if she wanted to make some money, but also have the ability to have her friends or family stay with her, she'd have that option. But I think at least even a long term, that would be good, too. But either way, I know it'd be a viable source for her to supplement her small fixed income. So, that's my two cents.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Any questions? Yeah. So, option four for you, Joseph.
Absolutely. I would settle for the, the planning and zonings, but I think everybody should have the right to make that decision. No, not many are going to take advantage of it, and that's the key fact. You can look at every other city that's doing it, it's not the majority. And, you know, I, I think that that, the data speaks for itself of that. You know, maybe in 30, 40 years, we'll have 200 in a small city like this, so who knows? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Next is Deanna Berry. All right. Great. Thank you very much. Next is Audra, is it Gray? I may be misreading the last name. Okay. The next person is Doug Cohn. Good evening, Mr. Cohn.
Good evening. I'm Doug Cohn, live at 351 South Marion Street. Full disclosure, I don't have any intention of building an ADU on my property. However, I'm completely in favor of option four. If you want to have one, have one. An earlier speaker talked about increasing density the smart way. We don't have any more space, and, and we're building taller, and I would rather have ADUs than pastel-colored boxes. John had talked about the 180 existing accessory-dwelling units, they're mostly on a few blocks either side of Broadway. And that's true. But, until 1933, Clarkson on the east, which was still the, the boundary for Inglewood, and Cherokee west of Broadway, that was the boundary of Inglewood. If the ADUs were west of Cherokee, they didn't count, because they weren't in Inglewood. Going south, 1927, Oxford was the southern boundary of Inglewood. By 1933, they had moved to Quincy, and didn't go farther than that until the 40s. In my part of town, Clarkson, up till World War II, was the edge of Inglewood. And Dartmouth was a cow path that didn't connect to university. And so all the, the reason all the ADUs are concentrated along Broadway, that's where the houses were. That's where the people lived. Just one more suggestion. Have this whole big, long discussion of the owner occupancy stuff for ADUs. I think the whole thing could be summarized with the very first sentence. Owner must occupy primary structure or ADU, period, and not have eight more paragraphs.
Make a temple, right?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is CJ Cullinan.
So I'm CJ Cullinan, 1501 East Dartmouth Avenue, over 20-years. And it is in Arapahoe Acres with my neighbor John. As an Inglewood Historic Preservation Society Secretary, one of the things I'm very concerned with is the loss of our homes. We talk about density, we talk about maximizing lot use and creating the colored boxes. The idea of honoring our historic buildings, maintaining that continuity and consistency in our neighbors' street, block, neighborhood, whatever you want to call it, that idea of when these other type of buildings go up, they're definitely altering everything. And I'm, so I'm looking at for architectural consistency with the neighborhood, for it to fit the street, historic continuity with the primary house. And the idea of putting up a Lego thing in the back that doesn't match the house in the front, I think that's something we should consider, and I would love for Planning and Zoning to consider that. The idea that R1As were not considered, I thought that was interesting. I was like, some of the primary homes should be able to do this. And then, ADUs might prevent more duplexes in these concentrated homes that don't match our neighbors, okay? One of the things I, I wanted to point out was, I know on Dartmouth, there was a family that moved out of Inglewood, and it was a bummer, because they were active. And they had two kids, and so they were active in the school, and their mom wanted to move in and build a house in the back, and they couldn't. So they left. And it was a bummer. The mom could have had her privacy, could have been a caregiver, could have also been very active in the schools in the city of Inglewood. And has Arapahoe Acres Historic District, which I live in, too. There are five lots right now that are definitely big enough to house ADUs in the back. But parking, like John said, would be a major issue, and access, we have no alleys there. I am really hoping that you would consider and always keep at the forefront that Arapahoe Acres has gone through a lot of changes. Even though we're Historic District, we've had some losses left and right because of lack of protection. But now that I'm on the Historic Inglewood His- Commission, hee-hee! Hopefully, we can voluntarily move forward to protect our homes. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I'm not quite sure. Are you advocating for it to be?
I am so sorry, yes, for ADUs with additional considerations. No, I didn't say that. Thank you very much.
Can I ask my question?
Oh, I thought you had, that was your question.
No, that was. Are you advocating for ADUs to be in Arapahoe Acres or not?
No, not at all. Because we don't have the parking. They don't have the access. And I hope they wouldn't.
They don't have alleys.
We don't have alleys.
Well, option four would put it in anywhere.
Oh, they can put it anywhere. I'm just saying, please consider protecting Arapahoe Acres as a Historic District.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Jones, and then Greg Naddison. Greg?
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm Greg Kinnadison, and I live at 3121 South Race in District 2, Go Linda Olson. It's an R1A area. I'm in favor of the ADU proposal, option number four. I, I work from home, and I can imagine an ADU being supportive to working from home and having two small kids, because I could work with a little bit of separation and have some more focus. I'm also a big gardener, and will be giving a free class on composting, June 16th, 9:00 AM, at the Inglewood Depot Garden. Small plug. But as a gardener, I spend a lot of time on my garden, and I can see ADUs supporting me being able to live near my garden for the long term. You know, as I move out of my house, as I no longer need space for kids inside of the house, my wife and I could move into the ADU, still have access to the garden, and still have access to the lovely neighborhood that we love so much. I wanted to draw council's attention to the National Citizen Survey from 2018. I'm sure that you've read over that. But there was one part that I thought was interesting. Looking at the trends over time, affordable, quality housing is the element that was rated most negative in 2018. It was sort of middle-of-the-pack at 50% positivity in 2007, 2009, 2014, and then in 2018, it went to 30% positivity, or 70% of Inglewood citizens have a negative perspective of that. So the worst one, basically. This seems to me like it's a ready, is a proposal that's ready to go, and it's a small change, relatively speaking, and it seems like a smart growth option for the city.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kinnadison?
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg.
Our next speaker is Blaine Harvey, and then Britt Fuchs will be next. Good evening, Mr. Harvey.
Good evening, Council. I didn't think I was going to speak tonight, so this is great. I am a developer. I own probably 10 properties in Inglewood right now. Many of them, actually, I think three or four of them have accessory-dwelling units behind them right now. I am very much in favor of the ADU proposition that's been put forward in the Planning and Zoning map, as far as zoning. But I just kind of want to bring a couple of points that I think council should be made aware of, as far as my opinion of kind of impacts. There's a lot of existing units already. I think it would make sense for council to at least consider some sort of enforcement for any illegal units, as far as use, occupancy, setting a standard for this, this new kind of, you know, everyone's going to have this rental in their backyard type deal. And then maybe even having some sort of amnesty or fee waived for a review on existing structures, to bring them into the program, if we wanted. I think it could be an incentive to the city. I think there's going to be a low adoption rate on it. Honestly, I think probably 10% or less is people at houses, just from the financial cost. And then my other kind of concern or point is to see infrastructure needs, as far as trash. I will agree with the comments that the alleys are in so-so shape, that they do kind of fill up with things. And if we're going to put more density on the alleys, it's going to bring different behaviors and, and activities. So although I am in favor of it, I think that there should be a little bit of further oversight to the program. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Could I ask you a question about the 10 properties that you have? That you, and you said several have ADUs already, maybe you can come up, I don't know. Have you seen cities do an amnesty program before? Because some of the complaints that I'm hearing is they're looking at what we currently have, and, and of course, they're allowed to do all kinds of things that would not be the same in our new adoption. same in our new adoption, if we were to pass it. So have you ever seen cities do that?
I think it should be a voluntary thing. As an owner, for me to come into the program and put a deed restriction on a property I own hurts value for me. But, you know, I think some owners that are primary residents would probably opt into it. I think if you're not going to have a primary family member living in that ADU, what seems to be the consensus for a lot of the need here is for seniors aging in place, maybe some supplemental type income, or helping offset some of that income restriction, is maybe even a registration for someone that's going to operate it as a rental unit. I think that you're going to have a lot of people that maybe have not been landlords before, that have watched a lot of TV shows, or decide that we're going to convert a garage, or don't understand building code, and are going to potentially have unsafe units in the alley, and possibly code violation, so.
Thank you. Thank you.[664.23][664.23](applause) Britt Fuchs? Good evening.
Hi there. I'm Britt Fuchs, and I live at 3151 South Clarkson Street. And we have lived there for 25 years. We have a 21-year-old and an eight-year-old. And I am absolutely for the ADU idea, concept. And I would say that there's something that's pretty exciting to consider, and that is to protect the boutique neighborhoods that we have. And know how to go about this in a wise way makes a ton of sense. And so I think, I just love what I've heard. I really have to turn around and see, like, how many millennials there are or not. Not very many right now. I mean, however, many of them would probably be okay with affording rent without having to live with three people. Potentially, I'm not speaking for all millennials, but I'm thinking of my family situation. And also, my parents are baby boomers. I think a lot about, okay, what's next? So scalable housing is a real thing. It's like, okay, what is available between it is so and it is so? So there's that question. Can we, you know, offer anything in Inglewood for, or anywhere in the metro without having a subsidized, you know, voucher or some formal hand or support? You know, $400, $500, $600, $700, $800, including utilities? Not heard of, most likely. So it makes sense to offer scalable housing to, you know, to people who want to live in the cities. And then I think there's an opportunity to really look at what works in other cities. This isn't new. This is no big deal. This happens in all, over in the country, in other countries. It happens in cities that are trying really hard to do the same thing, and they're doing it, they're presenting like Boston, for example. And I'll just briefly mention, they have chosen a particular unit around 400 square feet that they've set up in the city center. And they invite their citizens to come and take a look at it. And they're encouraging their citizens to build these accessory dwelling units because they have determined this is a good size. It's a good concept. So maybe to have the opportunity for, you know, to council and then the citizens and the community to really consider what makes the most sense for Inglewood and move forward with some great examples. And allow this to happen in the, you know, idea of around two, three, and then four. But really do it well. So start off with just like, yeah, this is tight. It's going to be done in a way that is, you know, protects the boutique neighborhoods, protects the people that have done amazing work around making their place a special place. But I'm okay with reinventing the way our property operates. We could take out an old shed and maybe, you know, move things around a little bit to build an accessory dwelling unit.
Battery went good.[859.51][859.51](laughter) Britt, I do have a question.
That's okay.
So we have a question for you. In just a minute.
Okay. And I think the scalable housing thing is the most important piece here.
Are you, are you saying that you believe that the 650 is too much, and you'd like to see them be smaller, around that 400 square foot?
I don't think it's too much. However, I think something smaller. There's plenty to do in a very small space footprint. I mean, 450 square feet, you can do a lot with it. It's super comfortable. So therefore, you're looking at more of a, I could get crazy and say $20,000, but I'll be, you know, $50,000, $70,000.
Oh.
You don't have to spend $200,000 on these things. And they can be done so well with quality. And it's just something to consider. It's like, really selective design is the token concept here.
And you said that's what Boston, I'm a little tight in my 1,000 square foot, so I'm going to take your word that 400 square foot could be comfortable.
It could even be.
But you said that's available on some information from Boston is doing that?
Boston, LA has some examples. Oregon has great examples. I mean, I could keep going. It's, and I think it'd be wonderful to really do a study, whether it be with the citizens and the council, and/or, however, whatever that looks like.
Could I ask staff, is there currently a minimum? I can't remember right now.
No, there is no minimum.
There's a maximum of 650. It cannot be over 650, but there is not a minimum.
We did not establish a minimum.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah. Lots of great ideas and fun things, excellent things to look forward to that are great solutions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[976.01][976.01](applause)
I'm just going to ask a question before the next person comes up. Maybe you can answer this, Mr. Obero. Did you, I assume the Planning and Zoning Commission looked at some other cities' models? Were there any in particular that you were thinking about? Were you looking at Denver a lot, or do you remember?
We did look at various suburbs here in Denver metro area and what their regulations were. Also then, in certain cases, certain areas of the regulations, we actually looked nationally to a lot of different cities, especially how they handle these owner occupancy requirements. And if, in terms of examples, yes, looked a lot at Denver as well.
Did you look at Boston? Do you remember?
I don't recall Boston.
It'd be good to have maybe a couple of links of other places that have done it for people to look at. I don't know.
Might be a good idea.
Thank you.
I've got case studies. I sent council on January 9th, Foreman, Atlas, Alford, Bay Area, as well as a HUD study. So if you'd like it, we have it, we send it to you.
That might be a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andy Taylor, and then Erin Jorgensen is after Andy. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Andy Taylor. I'm a homeowner at 4310 South Lapin Street, District Four. I'm a little confused as to why we're here tonight. I've been following this process as it's gone through Planning and Zoning Commission, through the multiple open houses, the great work of the Community Development Department. And then there would be, if this came to council, multiple chances for public comment to move this forward. I'm thinking that this would be a good time to move this proposal forward. I'm in favor of what's come out of the Planning and Zoning Commission with option one. I could also work with option four. But I'm also concerned that this might just be a first step, that we might be back having more discussions in a few years, where we look to maybe liberalize this a little bit more, provide more choices, where maybe we would take away the requirement for off-street parking, where we could take away that owner occupancy requirement, and maybe even do these units, places with duplexes as well. This is really about liberty and choice, providing lots of housing choices for individuals. This isn't just about owners and homeowners and developers. This is about renters and people who want to live here, who want to experience our quality of life. There's many cases where people could, under zoning rules today, build large garages for cars and places that we could provide a reasonable amount of housing. So I would rather be making housing for people and not for cars. So, thank you.[1158.15][1158.15](applause)
Good evening. Good evening. I'm a homeowner, and I live at 3195 South Corona Street. And the first thing I'd like to say is every one of you that spoke tonight was very good, and you had a lot of important things to say, and I do appreciate it. Obviously, I don't agree with all of them, but you're right on. I have a few questions for council. I always like to follow the money. So, well, would, how much extra would the city get? Would it just be real estate taxes? And I'm sure, well, this is a question, have you looked at that versus the drain on our infrastructure, wear and tear on the streets and so forth?
Can you answer the question about how much the city would get from someone building ADUs?
Relatively speaking, the property taxes, most of the property taxes that you pay go to the school district, and the city gets a very small slice of that. So in the grand scheme of things, it's probably not something that will make the city financially flush. More residents coming to Inglewood and living here would, might, we would see more activity in terms of shopping in our district, so that, maybe in that way, the city would benefit from sales tax.
In all fairness, he is with the Community Development Department, not to finance. So I think that might be a little unfair to try and get that financial questions out of somebody that's not his position.
Okay. But I'm sure it's been factored in there, right? Please say yes.[1303.83][1303.83](laughter) I mean, if you're going to make more from the real estate taxes, and you said that was pretty small, but I can see where there'd be a lot more use of streets and plumbing and so forth. So there'll be a cost involved if we have more people living here. I'm not asking you to quantify that. I'm just getting that out there that, okay. I also would like to know what some of our options are. I've heard people talk about duplexes and apartment buildings. If we don't allow the ADUs, I would assume that we would, if somebody wanted to put an apartment building next door to me, there would have to be a zoning change, and then you would be coming to us and saying, we're thinking about doing this. Okay. I'll try to make this quick. I hate the thought of losing our trees. I really, I'm concerned about environmental issues, and I think when we take the trees away and we put concrete and structures up there, in the long run, we may not be helping ourselves. But I only get one vote. I know that. And I've heard a lot of talk about density, and that kind of makes me think, if we build it, they will come. I mean, if we, if we put more apartment buildings in Inglewood, well, more people are going to live there. That's why we build them. And I'm not sure if that's wise. I'm just putting it on the table. And do we, in these proposals, do we have a minimum building cost? I mean, let me, let me give an extreme example. Could I tear my house down and drag a mobile home there? Let's hope not, right?
Right.
Okay. So there's something that, that says, you know, either that's not the right kind of structure, or it's not in keeping with the neighborhood. I like in keeping with the existing neighborhood. I understand there's pressure to have affordable housing, but there's, I don't know how to say this without getting booed down. I wanted to live in Cherry Hills, but I couldn't afford it, so I moved to Inglewood. Okay. And if I, when I think of these units, I think of the ones on Floyd and Logan. And if I had any others to look at, I might think a lot differently. But I'm done talking. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Mayor Brotem, if I may.
Yes.[1473.91][1473.91](applause)
I think a fair question was raised by Ms. Connet. Mr. Obero, do you know, as the Planning and Zoning Commission went through this process, as far as you know, was expense considered on the infrastructure of the city?
I think that the way that we were looking at it is that there is no really additional cost, because the sewer and water lines are already there, they already exist. So we don't, we didn't figure that there would be any major expense from it.
Thank you.
So it was only for the infrastructure piece for the ADU for water and sewer that they were, I mean, I think she was bringing up like
The impact.
Other impact stuff. Did they?
We have been told by the Utilities Department that our water and sewer systems are sized for, were sized back in the day, in the 1950s, for a city the size of 50,000 population.
So the water and sewer infrastructure was looked at?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up financial question?
Okay. Yes.
Karen Dixon again. Was there an operator's fee associated with this proposal, like an annual fee to pay?
No.
Is that something that should be considered? Just as a, maybe it's even minimal. Boulder has one, just.
Put it on a post. Did it? Can I ask you a question? Why are you proposing that? Why are you bringing that up?
Just to, just to offset any impact financially to the infrastructure.
What impact does it offset?
Traffic for one, so, yeah, parking, streetlights, traffic, that stuff. But maybe improvements can be made to the infrastructure. So like, you won't be getting new TAP fees, because there's no new TAPS, but still an offset on the amount.
Do you know what Boulder charges for this fee?
I don't. I don't remember. And what I, I lived in Boulder 10 years ago, so, and had friends. I didn't have an ADU, but had friends that did, and they paid, but I don't know what it was, and it's probably different now than.
It didn't help Boulder enough.
Right.[1617.51][1617.51](laughter)
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Michael Stuckey? Paul Skazinski?
Good evening again, council, since I spoke with you a couple days ago. Early in the audiovisual presentation, it was stated that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends only two types of detached ADUs, either a carriage house or a pop-top on the garage, a second story on a garage. And please tell me it ain't so, because I've been working on this now for years, and my intention is to put an addition on the side of the garage, not above it, and I hope that will be approved. In fact, I would like to put a two-story attachment, leaving the existing garage as it is, just adjoining to it. And is, is that going to fit the way planning and zoning defines what's approved?
The way I would, I would view that is that you would have your existing garage, and you'd be building something right beside it. So it'd be, and so as long as it met the, all the side, the setbacks, and it was in the, within the 35, we're 35% of the lot, it would be acceptable.
Okay. Well, that's good. Now, I'd like to comment a little bit on a couple of previous speakers. One gentleman brought up the thought that not everybody that qualifies is going to build an ADU. In fact, you know, I kind of had the gut feeling that that was true. In fact, I think it'll be a very small percentage, and I'm glad that he came up with some statistics to back that, that, you know, let's say we have 1,000 properties that qualify, I doubt we'd get any more than 100 that actually do it. So the overwhelming fear of having all of your neighbors with small structures in their backyard, I think is, you know, not, not going to be as bad as they fear. And in fact, what we propose, of course, is, as I mentioned before, is for our son, who returned to our home a couple of years ago, and we've very quickly learned that an adult son or daughter has a lot more stuff than a child. And our house is, our little house is overwhelming, it's too small. I built the garage myself, 22 by 26, and I overbuilt the foundation, the slab, with the thickened edge and number five rebar and five rebar and extra thick. So, maybe it would even qualify, but we're not really planning on the pop-top. We're gonna do the addition on the side, and we'll look forward to getting it done. And I've been working on this for three and a half years now, so please, please make a decision.
Our next speaker is Jerry Adkinson, and then Shane Wilson is next.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Adkinson. My wife and I live at 3174 South Fox, and I'm definitely in favor of the ADU. We favor option four, and we're not gonna put up something as soon as they pass it, all right? So, we just wanna have the option to be able to do it if we need to do that. And I would like for any other homeowner in Inglewood to have the same option. I know that, just based on the statistics we heard, not everybody's gonna do that. But I do wanna have that option. We're getting older, we're baby boomers ourselves, and, and, you know, it would just be great to be able to put up a unit on our home, on our lot, to be able to generate some additional income. One concern I had about the leave of absence was the one for medical purposes, where all, all the leave of absence seem to have a requirement on them that you be there for a year before you qualify for a leave. Is that correct? I would think that the one, a medical leave should have some variance from it, because you never know when you're gonna have some medical problem. It can occur at any time. And it would be a shame if somebody had a medical issue less than a year before they, they needed to take that leave. So, I think there should be some option, particularly for the medical leave, that didn't, that allowed them to waive that one-year requirement. That would only seem reasonable. And, but I'm definitely in favor of opening, option four would be my, my preferred option, to give everybody the option and not be so restrictive. But I know that not everybody's gonna do it either. I mean, you know, we just wanna have the option, that's all. That's all I had to say.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Actually, it's on your behalf, but to ask Mr. Overland, about the medical thing, how did you come to that one year as an ex, as a suggestion? Did you talk about what happens if someone has a heart attack the day before the year is over, and stroke, and?
You know, it's, it's very difficult to think of every situation that could happen. We did try to be as comprehensive as possible with all those situations that were listed, but I guess we probably had thought that we should be, it'd be better for us to be consistent in terms of ascribing a one-time period to all these situations. But I can certainly see the, that point that the speaker has made.
Okay, well, thanks. And I really appreciate all the work you've done on this. It's very good, so, thank you.
The question I had for you, sir, was that the difference for the medical leave is that during that period of time while people are on leave, I believe, is for the medical leave, that both units then can be rented out.
Right.
And I think, do you have a concern that if there was no limit on the medical leave, that then they would just become rental properties? And I kinda think all those rules, the zoning board was trying to go for the owner occupied, but that specifically moves it to both units being able to be rented out. And if there was more than that year, how would we, I mean, how would you propose to control that, or, I mean, somebody can be hospitalized for 10 years, or in a nursing home for a very long time, and that might turn those into rental units, is that?
Well, it's just something that I thought deserved a little bit more consideration, that's all. I, I don't have an immediate solution for that.
Well, it's difficult, because we would already be, I guess, in some way, kind of getting into people's medical and personal, and whether they're going on leave or vacation, and I'm not sure how we do the oversight for that. But, but just mostly for the medical piece, you were looking at, at having more discussion on the
Exactly.
Leave piece of it, even though that allows it to be rented out.
Right, and it, it would have to be up every year, as I understand. It would have to be renewed, the, if a person were on a medical leave, and they were, needed longer than a year to recuperate, before they could move back into their residence.
I'm not sure the city would be going into people's medical records, but.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I understand that.
I do understand what you're saying. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Skazinski, do you have a question?
Yeah, in regard to the, the limits of occupancy and so forth, that same subject.
Do you want to put the microphone off?
Some people, particularly people who are wealthier than I am, go south for the winter every year. Would they have to skip that year?
The requirement says that you must, you need to live there nine months of the year. You can go on vacation for three months.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Shane Wilson, and then Olivia Favis. Olivia? Matt Bailey? Doug Pierce? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us an opportunity, as homeowners, to come and share with you our situations. This, I guess, last couple of months, I've been informed I'm at the fifth stage of kidney disease, and I don't know how many of you know what the implications of that are. But I was just told at the dialysis center here in Inglewood that I will face increased costs for hemodialysis of $700 a month, or about $900 a month. And we've also learned and know that if my wife or I perish, our income will go down a third. So, we had the joy of purchasing a house here that is a half-block from our daughter and two grandchildren. And we're so happy to be able to support the family character of this district. And we're grateful that when a neighbor next door lost her life, we were able to direct them to a relative who only had children, young children, and they wanted to sell to a young family to preserve the nature of the community they had lived in. And so, I think that's very important. And I've also observed down, I live at 2948 South Corona, and I have observed that up at the end of Corona, a single-family dwelling was sold, and it now has 12 apartment, 12 apartments up there. Boy, is that tough on parking and traffic and everything else. I live four houses down from a home that had a carriage house built, and I want to share the experience. It has a long driveway, they have two cars, and the son and his wife live in the back, and the parents live in the front. And it has never been a traffic, parking problem. So, there are differences in what can be done, and I personally am in favor of going underground than going up. So, our house has 2,800 square feet, which is a lot of square feet for my family of two. It used to be a good size for a family of five or six. And we have had many people come in and say, "Well, this could be a part, this is a beautiful setting for an apartment underneath, and we'd rather live here than out at Denver Airport to come to work." And you could earn $1,500 a month for rent. It already has a bathroom, and you'd need a kitchenette, but, and an entrance. But I'm not sure that any of these options gives us an opportunity to use this in this way. And so, then, it would be so helpful, because the whole structure's there, the cost of modifying this would be maybe 30,000. That's something we can afford. But if you go to 200,000, your mortgage payments can eat your income and wind up producing more apartment buildings, I'm sure. Because our lot is pretty big size, and if you scrape our house, you could do what was done further up the street on Corona. So, I thank all of you for coming tonight and sharing your points of view, but I, and I hope I'm the only one on dialysis, but I suspect I'm not, because you have many people doing hemodialysis right here in this center, which I commend the Inglewood for developing. It means a lot to be alive. And I hope I can pay my bills, so I can stay here near my grandchildren.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rudell. Sir, I did wanna ask you a question. I apologize for that, for making you come back. Do, were you saying that you believe, are you thinking that the ADU that are being proposed is somehow discouraging you from doing some other type of use of your home right now?
That, thank you for asking that question, because it's my question.
You're very welcome.
When I came here for the meeting previous, where the city was involved in forming us the options, I was told that we could not convert the downstairs into a rental unit, because the ceiling would be too low. I said, "Well, if we kept our family down there, why is it too low now to let somebody else use it?" So, I don't know whether any of, it's not clear to me whether any of these options are going to allow me to do that, but all we'd have to do is open one side for a stairway and get an extra, the kind of window you need for being able to escape in one place. We already have one window down there that meets the requirement, so.
So, you checked with the city, and, because I believe that part of the presentation, there was reference to trying to discourage some of that and encourage the ADUs. So, I appreciate you bringing it forward, that, the mix of that, so.
It wasn't clear to me, and I don't know if option four makes that possible, or, because there seems like maybe a couple of more options. That wasn't clear to me whether they, we could use the downstairs apartment, but, boy, I'm telling you, it would make the difference to be able to pay the additional $900 a month medical fees and, and stay near our grandchildren, and avoid apartment buildings becoming the future of this wonderful street we lived on called Corona.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you for coming back up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know whether you can answer my question.
We're gonna find out. If we can get your address, and specifically, we can check into it, if I think.
Yeah, because, well, we've come from California, and we're so happy we were able to come move near our grandchildren, and we wanna retain that opportunity. But we have increased costs, need to use the space for the benefit of the community.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Rudell. Our next speaker is Susan Abruzzo, and then Justin Overland, or Kristin Baker, okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. This is awesome, the turnout. I'm, I'm very happy, especially with the homeowners. So, the first thing that I wanted to say is I'm for option four, specifically because that affects where we live. And as I look at all of these maps tonight, that's the one map that has all sticky notes. None of the other maps do. So, I think that speaks volumes. That area has some of the largest lots that I've noticed, so there's a lot of room to be able to do the ADUs. As far as the schools in that area, there's three within walking distance. I know that it's been brought up about seniors living in some of these units, but I was also thinking, you know, why does it necessarily have to be an older person or a millennial? 650 square feet, in my opinion, I'm pretty sure a single mom and a child could live in, which would make all the difference in the world, especially in that community. I have kids that go to all of the schools in Inglewood, and I've seen that firsthand with a lot of the families, where it's a single mom and even a dad, that have one child or two children, and they can't even afford to live in Inglewood. And they've lived here before, and they've lost their houses, things have happened. But Inglewood has a strong sense of community that I've seen, you know, I'm a Colorado native, I was born in Inglewood, I lived on the Western Slope, came back. All of my family have lived in Inglewood, and the community here is unlike anything anywhere else. I can't live anywhere else in the metro area and have that same feeling. So, with that being said, you know, I know that there's a lot of our residents that are struggling on fixed incomes, the millennials who can't afford to get into an apartment complex, people with medical expenses. There's other people within our area that are able to move forward with this proposed plan to help alleviate some of the struggles that other community members that we have are having. So, I think that that's something that's very important for all of us as well, is we're keeping people here in Inglewood, we're helping each other out, whether it be, you know, I'm able to go ahead and do the EDU, this person can't, we're able to help each other out, we're maintaining our community. That was one of my biggest parts of it. The Arapahoe Acres, I wasn't actually familiar with Arapahoe Acres specifically. I think a lot of valid points were brought up this evening about the historic area. So, I think those concerns are valid, and maybe, you know, I know this has been going on for quite some time, and there's a lot of people that have been, you know, wanting to get their structures built for years, as you had mentioned. My husband's been talking about it for years, and we've just been waiting. So, yes, we need to come up with, you know, an answer, so that we can start getting, moving forward on this. Because somebody had mentioned earlier, you can't have the house with the kids and the golden retriever and the garden and all these things. Yes, you can. I haven't. You know, we have, I'm on the 4,800 block of South Delaware Street. We have upstairs, we have downstairs, it's a five-bedroom home, sorry. We have the golden retriever, I have a huge garden, a zen garden, and we have the street parking. We have the garage already there, and I know that we have to scrape the garage, because it does have the slab foundation, and I know that you have to have the three-foot footers in order for it to be structurally sound. So, it does make sense to have those restrictions, and I think what you guys have come up with as far as regulations, I don't see any problem with that. I think that, that keeps things towards monitored, and people aren't just doing it on their own, not pulling permits, just having people move in. So, I think the way that you guys have so far done it is great. I just would like to see things get moving.
Questions? All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Justin Overland, and then Christine Baker?
She won't speak.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Justin Overland. I live at 4047 South Pennsylvania. One of my thoughts was that the size of the unit should be scalable to the number of lots the house occupies, so that, for instance, those people that are on three or four lots, why should they be restricted, restricted to 650 square feet? Also, that if the existing garage is larger than that, that the structure, if it's a pop-top, that it should just match the footprint of the garage. It would seem odd to have, if it was bigger than that, to have it, have to be smaller than that. And I think all homeowners should have the right to or not to, go ahead and choose this option, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Next is Trish Ellie. Good evening.
Good evening. Terrified being up here. Well, I want to be able to have the option to provide a dwelling for my in-laws down the road. They are amazing people. Sorry to get emotional. But they are amazing, and I'd like to be able to give back to them because they have done so much for us. I think that's all I can say without crying. Any questions? But I think
You'd be one of my in-laws.
They are terrific.
I have a question. Would you be in favor of option, which option would you, four?
Four, yeah, because I just want to have a unit that is obviously to code. You know, I definitely want oversight, absolutely. I want it to be like a nice, beautiful, like bungalow, like what you would see in Wash Park. But I think 650 might be a tad bit big. I don't know. I think garages are typically around 400 square feet in the Inglewood neighborhood. And I think like 400, 450 would probably be absolutely doable. And my in-laws, they have told me, we're not fancy people. Just as simple as fine. So, but I think that would be fine, and you still have plenty of yard. And I'm on the 4,100 block of Galapego.
All right. Thank you very much. Andrew Geiton. Good evening.
Good evening. I hope you'll forgive me for not being as eloquent as a lot of the other people who have spoken up here. I wasn't planning on speaking up here, but I wasn't hearing anybody else with quite my perspective, so I decided to sign up. I've rented an apartment here for almost two years now, so I'm not a homeowner and I'm new here. But, so I'm clearly in the minority of politically engaged citizens here, so I believe in democracy, so probably don't listen to me. But it makes a lot of sense to me that if somebody wants to expand their own property in a residential area to allow for more residential space, that they should be allowed to do that. And frankly, when I came in here, I mostly believed that because I thought it might make my rent go down. But since I've gotten here and listening to everyone else, I've realized that for a lot of people, this can mean the difference between being able to afford to live in Inglewood and not being able to afford it. And ideally, I would like option four. I would like to say something for options two and three, though. I haven't heard anyone speak for them, so they seem like the perfect compromise since no one likes them. It'll make everyone equally unhappy. In all seriousness, better than nothing. That's all.
Can I ask you, why did you think that the ADUs might make your rent go down?
I'm no economist, but it seems to me that if the supply of housing goes up, if there's more room for people to live, then there might be less competition for everybody wanting to live here, and prices might go down. That's more or less what I remember from economics class.
Depends on whether it was Kenzie and or not, we'll see.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming up. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Jane Campbell.
I apologize for being late. I didn't get off work till 7:30. My name's Jane Campbell. I live at the corner of Floyd and Downing, 2200 East Downing. No, it's 3,300. I used to live on Dartmouth. I have lived in three houses in Inglewood. Altogether, I've lived here more than 40 years of my life, in and out, in and out. I don't like the way Inglewood is now with all those apartments and all those extra buildings that make the parking on the streets so... The homeowners can't even park. And I have one of these kind of things behind me, so it'd be Floyd and Pennsylvania. But it would be grandfathered in probably. It's where they turn the garage into an apartment. And the owner does not live on the premises, so they have two income streams for that owner. And it's the worst-looking yard we have to look at, and it's terrible. And the person that lives right on the alley in the garage that was made into this, so close to the alley, any kind of noise disturbs her, and then she complains. So trash trucks are loud. You don't want to live right on an alley, and some of these would be very close to alleys. And the more people per square foot in Inglewood is making it go down, in my opinion. More people per square foot. I think they call it maximum profit per cubic foot. So I'm really upset with the builders and that kind of thing to take down one little 800-square-foot house on a 50-wide lot and build five or six units, like on Corona and Hampton. My friend, that she grew up in Inglewood, lives in the next house to the north. Those five units will be sideways facing Hampton. It takes away all her sunshine in the winter, all of it. They are going to be tall. They're going to cost over $500,000 apiece. I don't think a builder should be able to make that much money off of a 50-wide lot here in Inglewood. And the same thing, this is a moneymaker for a lot of people at the expense of the neighborhood. I don't know what else to say, but parking is terrible. Parking on the street. We just had guests. We have guests right now. And they, and across the street, they get hit by cars all the time. It's not safe on the streets. And Inglewood isn't safe anywhere. I wouldn't go to the King Supers after dark by myself. I, well, maybe right here, but that Walmart is a disgrace to go by yourself almost at any time of day. I'm just saying I'm disappointed. I know it'd be hard to fix any of these things, but I don't think certain people, as such as builders, and I'm a builder. I've built two or three of our own houses. They shouldn't be able to make that much profit. I know they have to buy these little houses for 300-something. Yeah. But they don't need to make, well, what was that, six units times 500? No, it's way too much profit.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Campbell? Thank you. Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate your coming. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Actually, if somebody from Planning and Zoning would like to speak to us, that would be great also. You don't have to, but I appreciate Planning and Zoning being here.
Real quick question. Is there a drop-dead date for this decision to be made as processes go on year after year?
We are hoping, we are going to have a follow-up discussion on
This one again?
No. On Monday, City Council is going to have a follow-up discussion on this meeting tonight. And so that's
It's on Tuesday.
On Tuesday, because Monday is the memorial, or, yeah.
Yes, Tuesday. All right. Thank you.
Didn't ask my question. There is no drop-dead?
No.
I'd be glad to speak to this, though. So I think Can you repeat the question, please? The question is, is there a drop-dead date and when we're going to make a decision on this? Because it seems like it's gone on a long time for many of you that have been engaged. There are many people that have not been engaged, and that was one of the reasons why we did tonight. We put it in every possible thing we could to get more out so that people who haven't been paying attention because they don't know what these are and they're just not, you know, they're not paying attention, they're busy lives. We want to make sure we had one more event. And I know it's frustrating, but we also were told that some of the events that have been in the past, those who are particularly against ADUs, felt like it was already a done deal. And it's not. It's not a done deal, and we're not, we haven't been a full council. I think we wanted to wait until we maybe get seven people here and have a robust conversation. So, you know, it's unfortunate it's taken this long, but part of it is to try and get citizens fully up to speed on it and not have a complete, you know, whatever in Inglewood over it. But I think that's my perspective. I don't know if other council members see some other reasons, too.
And I do. I think that when you're taking land use and land use and the zoning needs to be considered for decades. It needs to last as long that I have, that you have, the comfort level the zoning you're buying into today is going to at least last the course of your mortgage. That what you're investing in today has some lifespan. So it's not just deciding today, but where this is going in the future as well. And so these decisions are not made lightly. They are value. They are investment. They are one of the most important investments we make to create wealth for ourselves, for our children, is our home, is our community. So it isn't taken lightly, and I don't think that, I think this has been going on for, I think, a little over two years. It's been brought up before, and I don't think that that's an excessive period of time to talk about land use issues that once we do this or not do it, we're affecting people's property and their value. Some people believe that it might affect it negatively. Some believe positively. Who knows? That's part of what the conversation we're trying to have. The conversation on Monday was also to include, for the people who believe that because this got brought forward, not from a catalyst, not from a groundswell from the community, but because the city kind of looks like it brought it forward or the planning and zoning, that a lot of people did believe that maybe it was already a done decision. That's why we put option five on there, to let people know that it's still understandable that if they don't want it at all, that we haven't made a decision yet. And so there will be some more conversation on it. And I know it's frustrating for the people that may want to be building something or have planned something, but it's frustrating for the people who think that it might already be a done deal, too. And they want to make sure that we have a conversation that's as open and transparent as possible. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
So just considering all the outreach that's already been made over the last few years and all the resources we need, the fellow meeting and everything else, at what point do you think we'll have to add enough conversations with the residents who work based on the evidence?
Well, I'm only one of seven now. As of yesterday, we have a seventh person who will be sworn in in a couple of weeks. My view is we're done with our big public forums like this. We will have to have a public hearing, I believe, right, to do this? Is that, yeah, that'll be required. So there will be one more, but that's required. But we'll have to have a conversation with all of us now to take all this information. We have a lot of information, you're right. So, and I want to just add one thing. ADUs had come up before on other city councils. So it wasn't just a city office or deciding to do this. We were glad that Planning and Zoning took it on. It takes time for them to get things like this on their agenda and do the work. So we've had people ask in the nine years that I've been on whether or not, why can't we do ADUs? And of course, when Denver did it, then people were really asking, why can't we do this? So it does take time, but I, yeah, so.
We're almost there.
I think we're almost there, one way or the other.
Any more comments from council members?
I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts and being patient with us through this process. It really means a lot to us to hear from each of you and consider your perspectives and possible changes and recommendations. So thanks for staying, sticking through this with us and being here tonight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, everybody.
Council member Cresta?
I'll certainly echo the thanks, and there are a few folks have mentioned that they felt that this is somewhat predetermined and the decision's made. I hear very compelling arguments on both sides. I appreciate very thoughtful insight from just about everybody that spoke. So thank you. I'm certainly still sorting through this myself. I think we've got a real good conversation in front of us. I made a lot of notes. And I certainly appreciate that this has taken a while. It is a big decision. It has been outlined here. But I think we're making progress, and council will start moving forward on it. So I, again, echo the thanks, and we'll get to work.
Right, and I also want to thank you all for coming. I want to thank you for the great attitude in this room, even though there were people on both sides. And just, we will be moving forward with this, but there is a lot to still discuss. So thank you all for coming. We greatly appreciate it.
And thank you for letting me borrow your pencil. Especially, well, I could have wrote on the table.